Good evening. I'd like to call this first meeting in 2018 to order. Would you please stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States, and the presentation of the colors, and Mr. Konesik, would you read us a new pledge?
Forward march.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and that was the Acadiana High School Air Force ROTC Cadet Corps there. In October 2017, board members, Bessie approved policy changes to Bulletin 1566, Pupil Progression Policies and Procedures. The Louisiana Department of Education has mandated changes to the 2017-2018 Pupil Progression Plan. Our current pupil progression plan has been formatted into the new template provided by the state. Current LPSS procedures that have not been changed will have not have been changed unless mandated by LDOE. The Lafayette Parish School System recommended changes have been posted on our LPSS webpage, along with a forum for public comment. The deadline for public comment is January 19, 2018. A committee meeting will be held at 4:30 PM in the boardroom here on January 24, 2018. The public will be invited to attend. Presumably, the pupil progression plan will come to the board in February for adoption. On January 8, staff at Myrtle Place Elementary School conducted a ribbon-cutting ceremony for their new playground equipment. School board officials, community members, parents, teachers, and students gathered to commemorate the opening of a new playground. The playground comes as a result of an initiative by the school board to provide funding for projects that fall outside the scope of capital improvements projects. Over the course of approximately six weeks, the PTO organization and the school raised approximately $32,000, which was their match to the purchase of the playground equipment. The Kiwanis Club of Lafayette is to be commended. They donated over $13,000 to the school for the playground. Many other businesses and families also gave generously. To date, the board's fund matching program has authorized some 11 projects. So, the Myrtle Place Playground Equipment Initiative is a shining example that when there is a project that parents can get behind and help fund, that they are willing to do so. And you are to be commended as well for the matching funds. On January 18, the Lafayette Education Foundation will celebrate honoring 16 teacher finalists in the Academy Awards-style event. The LEF Teacher Awards will be held at the Hyman Performing Arts Center at 7:30 PM, followed by a reception. Tickets are currently available at all Ticketmaster outlets and the Hyman Performing Arts Center. Congratulations and best wishes to the following LPSS teachers. In the elementary school category, Becky Cade from J. Wallace James, Catherine Hartwick from JW Falk, Courtney Vincent from Broadmoor Elementary School. In the middle school category, Carl Como from Edgar Martin, Lizette Henderson from Paul Bro. And in the high school category, John Brusart from Acadiana High, Nicholas Crader from Lafayette High, Philip Ryland from Acadiana High School, and Jacob Simon from Como High School. And in the inspirational category, Dana Rivera from Broadmoor Elementary School, and Chad Viatar from the LPSS Talented Program. So, we have some 11 finalists in the LEF Awards Program. The LSU Ag Center is pleased to announce the Fourth Annual En Cuisine de Jardin Cook-Off to be held on Saturday, January 20, at David Thibodeau STEM Academy from 9:30 until noon. Last year's winners were from Charles Burke Elementary School. Doors will open at 9:00 AM, and a $5 donation per person is appreciated. Lafayette Parish 4-H FFA Livestock Show and Sale will be conducted January 25 through the 27 at Blackham Coliseum. Good luck to our students who will be showing cattle, sheep, goats, swine, and poultry. The Acadiana District Livestock Show will be the following week, January 31 through February 3 at Blackham Coliseum. On January 30, Edward J. Sam Accelerated School of Lafayette will conduct its first graduation ceremony at the W.D. Mary Baker Smith Career Center in Coolinary Cafe. The school opened in July 2017. I'm pleased to announce that five students completed their coursework. Graduation is scheduled for 6:00 PM. On February 2, the LPSS community will celebrate the ribbon-cutting for the full and complete Southside High School project. Southside opened in August 2017, with Phase 1 being completed for students in grades 9 through 10. Phase 2 was recently completed and includes the gymnasiums, career and technical classrooms, and the music and art areas. And I am pleased to announce the LPSS Principals of the Year for 2018. The elementary school principal of the year is Lisa Thomas, principal of Westside Elementary School. Middle school principal of the year is John Mouton from Brusart Middle, and David Lejeune from High School Principal of the Year from Acadiana High School. They have qualified for the Louisiana State Top Award. Congratulations to those three excellent, outstanding principals. And with that, I would like to entertain a motion to open the floor for nominations for Board President.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. So, can we get a vote by acclamation? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. I'll open the floor for nominations. Ms. Morris?
I'd like to nominate Eric Konesik for president, please.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Okay, moved by that we select Mr. Konesik by acclamation. Any opposition? And all in favor? Congratulations, President Konesik. Thank you.
All right, well, I'd like to thank my fellow board members for the opportunity to serve as president. Look forward to a not-so-newsworthy 2018. And I'd like to entertain nominations now for the vice president position. Excuse me, I'd like to have a motion to open the floor for nominations for vice president.
I'll second.
So, we have a nomination and a second for Mr. Hidalgo for vice president? Okay, we have a nomination for vice president. Any other nominations? We have a nomination or a motion to elect Mr. Hidalgo by acclamation. With a second by Mr. Brusart? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Mr. Hidalgo, congratulations. All right, the next item on the agenda would be human resources personnel changes. Mr. Craig?
Congratulations, Mr. President. Ms. Thibodeau, I believe, has one introduction, and the other changes are attached to the item.
Good evening. First, I want to congratulate you, Mr. Konesik and Mr. Hidalgo. We look forward to working with you in human resources. We're looking to working with both of you. Tonight, I want to introduce a new assistant principal for Lafayette High School. Her name is Rachel Brown, Dr. Rachel Brown. Dr. Brown has earned a Bachelor of Fine Arts degree and a Bachelor of Science degree from UL Lafayette. She has earned a Master of Education degree in death education from the University of New Orleans, and a PhD in education, curriculum, and instruction from Capella University. Dr. Brown taught the deaf students for 12 years at Lafayette High School. She is coming to us from the Louisiana School for the Death, where she served as an assistant principal for one and a half years. She has also served as a continuing education instructor at UL Lafayette, where she taught American Sign Language. Dr. Brown has been an LEF Award nominee for two years. Congratulations, Dr. Brown. You want to come up?
Thank you for the recognition. I am really excited for this opportunity. Lafayette High is where I grew, and I was mentored and encouraged by so many awesome people, and I intend to pay that forward. I promise to bring passion and positivity to the campus every single day, to the staff, to the students, to the community, to the culture of Lafayette High School. I am proud to be part of the pride again. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, congratulations. Now we're moving on to the consent agenda. I'm going to read the agenda items and ask my fellow board members to let us know which items you'd like to pull. First item, approval of school-based academy director job descriptions, 3.1.
Pull that, please.
3.2, sales tax collection report for the month of November 2017. 3.3, sales tax fund budget revision number 1 for 2017-2018. 3.4, 2016 construction fund budget revision number 2. 3.5, Southside High School construction fund budget revision number 2, 2017-2018. 3.6, general fund budget revision number 2 for fiscal year 2017-2018. 3.7, special revenue fund budget revision number 2 fiscal year 2017-2018. 3.8, self-funded construction fund budget revision number 2, 2017-2018. 3.9, budget actual reports, December 2017. 3.10, grant fund summary, December 2017. 3.11, budget revision capital improvements fund and general fund. 3.12, the purchase of property for future prairie site replacement. 3.13, South Louisiana Giving Day, a project of Community Foundation of Acadiana.
Pull that, please.
3.14, general fund and capital improvement fund budget revision for transfer of funds, robotics. 3.15, approval of increase to HVAC maintenance contract with Bernhard Mechanical Contractors.
You pull that one.
3.16, board approval for personnel staffing at Southside High School for 2018-2019.
Pull that.
3.17, adoption of policy GBRIC maternity leave.
Pull that.
3.18, adoption of Resolution 0118, 1921, recognition of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holliday.
You pull that.
And 3.19, approval of minutes.
Mr. President, I'm over to the board approve all action consent items with the exception of items pulled.
Have a motion and a second to approve all consent agenda items not pulled. Do we have any comment from the public on the items that are not, that were not pulled from the agenda? Okay, we have no comments from the public. Any comments from the board members on the items not pulled? No comments. Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. This is the vote on the consent agenda.
Nine for, none against.
All right, thank you. We're going to go a little out of order today. We have a special guest in the audience. So, we're going to start with item 3.18, adoption of Resolution 0118, 1921, recognition, I'm sorry, recognizing Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Holliday. Dr. Shasong?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion and a second. I'd like to ask the audience if they have any comments on this item.
If you'll allow me, I wanted to pull this item, so I can certainly let my good friend and great gentleman, Senator Jarodzczuk, to speak on it.
Thank you, first of all, to Dr. Aguilar, to the staff, and to board members for this opportunity to come before you tonight, and congratulations to the new offices. And just want to say thank you for your continued service to public education in our community. It means so much for us to be on the same page and to be fighting for our kids to reach those higher levels. And again, with Dr. Aguilar and his staff, and you all working together, we're going to get there. Tonight, I'm here representing the Martin Luther King Holiday Committee. Want to tell you that this Monday will be our, this weekend, actually, will be our 33rd observance of the Martin Luther King Holiday celebration in our community, something that we're very proud of. If you Google and look around the country, a lot of communities have discontinued the legal observance of this holiday, and through the Recreation Department, consolidated government, and businesses, and individuals in our community, we continue to observe a weekend on and not one off. As you all know, it's a holiday from school, but we can't miss out on an opportunity to continue with the educational process. So, I just wanted to come by and say thank you for the resolution, because I think it highlights what we're trying to do and what you're trying to do as far as the vision of us all, working together, improving living conditions, the quality of life for all of us in this community. And I'll just take a minute just to recap, and I'll leave the flag with you all. As you all know, the diocese starts off on Friday night, and they recognize that all of the church parishes and the dioceses of Lafayette, individuals who have been selected to receive this award, and there's a special mass on Friday evening at Cathedral. And those individuals, of course, are symbolic of some of the goals and ideas that Dr. King exemplified during his life. On Saturday, we will be at the Martin Luther King Center. We have a musical extravaganza at 1:00 and a youth pageant. I want you to know that we have students from our public school system who participated in a poster contest, a middle school and elementary school poster contest, as well as an essay contest. We'll recognize those, the recipient of those students. The awards will be handed out on Monday. And we have a parade on Sunday that starts at 3:00 PM, right before the Saints' game at 4:00. So, you have time to get to the parade and then watch the Saints. So, make sure if you get an opportunity to, that'll be 3:00 on Sunday. And then we have a full day of activities at the Martin Luther King Center on Monday, beginning with the flag raising at 8:30, a prayer breakfast, and then we have a luncheon where we'll recognize those sponsors and those individuals and businesses that continue to keep the dream alive in our community after 33 years. And then on Monday evening at 6:00, we have our commemorative program. And at that program, again, that's where we recognize our students. We also have a quiz board where we have our middle schools engaged in that process where they'll compete during the day on Monday for the quiz board to see who brings that trophy home. So, we have engaged while school is out, we've engaged our students, we have the support of our educators. And I thought it was very important, Dr. Aguilar has asked to put this on the agenda, so that we can continue to raise the awareness in our community that while the school doors will be closed, the community doors are open, and the educational process continues. We'll conclude on Monday evening at 6:00 PM with our commemorative program. United States Congressman Cedric Richmond, who represents the 2nd District, will be our keynote speaker on Monday evening for the community program, and that will bring a close to the celebration in our community for this year. So, again, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. As I said, I'll leave these flowers for you all, and we welcome you if you're free during the lunch hour. Dr. Shasong is picking up lunch at the Martin Luther King Center. There's barbecue that will be served and plate lunches, and he has already written the check, and it's an open account. So, please come by during lunch if you get a chance, and enjoy lunch with us or any of the programs that we have on this. So, again, thanks for your continued service, and thanks for the opportunity to work with you on behalf of our students, our teachers, and all of those who support public education. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Boudreaux. Do we have any comments from board members? All right. No other comments. I'd like to call for a vote.
Nine for, none against.
I want to thank my senator, Gerald Boudreaux, for your kind remarks. I also want to take the opportunity at this time to remind you that if in fact you do have another meeting or another occasion and you need to leave early, now would be appropriate
Thank you. All right. Do I need to add that? All right, so we're going to move back to item 3.1, Approval of School-Based Academy Director Job Description. Mr. Santani?
President, I move that the Board approves the School-Based Academy Director Job Description.
All right, we have a motion to approve and a second. Like to open it up to the public if they have any comments on this item, 3.1 Approval of School-Based Academy Director Job Description. All right, we have no comments from the public. Board members? Mr. Santani?
I have a question for Dr. Aguilar or Ms. Tibbey, I don't know which one. I see that it's a, a school-based academy director, I see that it's 182 days. I do know that there are, and pardon me while I'm trying to open the PDF, there we go. I know most, if not all, of the academy directors that are in the schools have a, a class load, you know, and we'll take-
That's correct.
-Dr. Roban, for example, right? He teaches strings, I believe. But I also see that this is not sales tax eligible. How are we reconciling the difference where these are at least partially a classroom teacher?
Well, they can make extra compensation by working on a timesheet that requires extra hours, so they would be allowed to do that. Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm asking, I'm always very concerned about when we have leadership roles in our school. And I think this would qualify as a leadership role where a teacher in the classroom would be foregoing part of their salary in order to take this. You know, it's a disincentive for leadership if you get paid less money to do more work, right?
Right, right.
So, I'm concerned that it's the same other days, but not sales tax eligible, which means they don't get the-
That's right, they would have to sign something to know when they were going to the position, they would not be sales tax eligible. But we're not allowed because of the rubric that y'all passed, they have to teach so many classes to be eligible for sales, for the sales tax. And this person's going to be working with two different academies at two different schools, and it really would be a challenge to have, teach any classes and go back and forth between two schools.
So, what you're telling me is this is not, so this is kind of my second question, this does not cover the existing academy, like who, an academy director that's at one school? This is so, this is strictly for-
Well, we don't know who will apply, but-
No, no, I mean, like, I mean-
Could be an academy director that applies. I'm going to let Ms. Samick comment on it too, because she wrote the job description.
Mr. Santani? I made a misunderstanding, I'm asking, so is there, is this a new job title that does not-
There'll be a new job title, and it's a position that would go between two different schools, two different, the Health Academy, they'll be starting a new Health Academy at Northside, and there's a Health Academy at Lafayette High, and the person would go between those two schools.
But this wouldn't cover, like, just to keep using Dr. Roban as an example, this wouldn't cover him? No, not.
Those people remain the same. All of the other academy directors will continue to work under a teacher job description.
Perfect, thank you.
It's just this one because it's a unique situation.
Thank you very much.
Any other board member comments on this item? Dr. Shasson?
The current person that's handling the Health Academy is who? For Lafayette?
The person's name?
Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Moore.
Jennifer. So, it'll be a separate position from Jennifer's position?
We would in fact remove the, that position is a teaching position. The teaching position will remain. But the academy director responsibilities will go to the new position.
The new position?
Yes, sir.
Got you, okay.
Any other board comments?
Nine for, none against.
All right, next item on the agenda would be item 312, The Purchase of Property for a Future Prairie Site Replacement. Mr. Angel.
I approve a motion where we approve the purchase of property for a future prairie site replacement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the purchase of property for a future prairie site replacement. So, motion and a second to purchase property for a future prairie site replacement. Any comments from the public? Okay, any? Board? Mr. Angel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of questions. Could someone tell me what the appraised value of this property was or is, and what did, what do we propose to pay for it?
So, Mr. Angel, the, the asking price, the agreed-upon price at this point is 1.882 million dollars for the property. The property needs to be appraised. We cannot pay more than appraised value for the property. But that's the agreed-upon price at this point, 1.882 million dollars.
So, we, we agreed on the price even though it's not been appraised?
Contingent upon appraisal.
Okay, and we, have we, have we done preliminary work toward this project? I mean, have we issued an intent to buy it?
We have, we have a purchase agreement that's been signed by all parties, contingent upon Board approval, which is what we're asking you to do tonight.
I just find it, I'm just confused because it was, it was not appraised. I mean, it seemed like we would, if you didn't go into negotiate, you'd negotiate from a position of what is the appraised value?
Well, it takes quite, it takes some time to, to get an appraisal. It could be anywhere from four weeks to six weeks to get the appraisal. Madam, would you just maybe comment on, this is typically how we make purchases. And so, the process would be, we would, we would come upon a negotiated price based on comps that the real estate agent comes up to, but we have to have an agreed-upon price, and then, then we get it appraised because we don't, we need to have an agreement before we spend any money on an appraisal to know that they're going to sell it to us. So, if it's, if it doesn't appraise for the asking price, they have a chance to lower their price to the appraisal or not sell us the property. So, we can't pay more than appraisal, so that's going to be a bottom line end, but we have to have some agreement on price before we spend any money on appraisals or environmental assessments, all the stuff we have to do, go through before we buy property. We have to have an agreement that they agree to sell it to us. And we have to have a price at that point that's negotiated. They were asking 99,000 an acre, we ended up getting it for 82.7, somewhere around there. Appraisal should come in within the next few days. We had a small window of due diligence period, so that's why we're coming to you now because our next meeting, the due diligence runs out before the next meeting. Normally, we'd have all that done, but, so we're asking, because the due diligence is going to run out next week, we won't have to, we won't have the chance to come back to the Board at this point.
I understand that, that due diligence, it's, and I'm not, I'm not an appraiser or a realtor or developer, so I don't understand part of that, but we're certainly not going to build a prairie school in the next year. I mean, it might not even be in the next decade. And it just, it seemed like all of a sudden everything has to be done right away, and it's going to be a long time before. But that's okay, I mean, I fault myself for not understanding that. Who pays, who pays for the appraisal?
We do. We pay for the appraisal once we have an agreed-upon contract to buy the property. But we wouldn't necessarily spend the money if they wouldn't agree to sell it to us for a set price subject to appraisal.
So, if, if the property were to appraise more than the agreed-upon price, we would pay the lower price. And they refuse to sell below appraisal, do we get reimbursed for paying to have it appraised?
Yes, sir.
That money is gone?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any other board comments? Mr. Santani?
Just want to clarify, do they have the, they don't have the option to not sell it for below appraised value, right? If it appraises for more than the agreed-upon price, we pay the agreed-upon price, the seller cannot back out, is that correct?
Correct. That's why we have an agreement.
Of course, thank you.
And we try, we try to have, do some comps, but the problem with commercial real estate right now is there really hasn't been anything in that area that's sold in the last year or so, and the prices from two years ago are really inflated because of the economy at that point. So, the appraisal's taking a little bit more time, but we'd rather have appraisal that's later incorrect and accurate. So, if it becomes, if the appraisal comes in lower than asking price, they have the option to sell it to us for appraisal or back out of the, or back out of the deal. But if the price comes back higher appraisal, they have to sell it to us for the negotiated price.
Thank you very much.
Any other board comments? All right, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote.
Eight for, one against.
All right, motion carries. Next item, 3.13, South Louisiana Giving Day, a Project of Community Foundation of Mr. Santani?
Mr. President, I approve that the Board approves participation in the South Louisiana Giving Day and authorizes the superintendent to sign any participation documents that are required by the Community Foundation of Acadiana to set up accounts for our schools to receive donations via this event.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Santani and a second by Dr. Shasson. All right, I'd like to open up, well, it looks like we have a presentation on this item.
Yes, thank you, President Kenezak. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you. My name is Raymond A. Bay, I'm with Community Foundation of Acadiana, and my colleague Lauren Bro and I are going to give you a short presentation. I want to thank Dr. Aguilar and Billy for inviting us to, to make this happen and the school board, and I want to thank the school board for your public service. I wish Senator Boudreaux was still here. Senator Boudreaux was, Gerald Boudreaux, when he was a charter board member of our organization, in fact, back in 1999 and 2000, so we're proud to have, have him serve on our board. I'm here to talk about Community Foundation of Acadiana. Lauren is going to speak about a project of our organization. So, Community Foundation of Acadiana is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, tax-deductible entity. Our core purpose is to build legacies and improve communities by connecting generous people to the causes they care about. We're not exclusive to Lafayette, we cover an eight parish area, including Lafayette Parish, and we're very committed to that, that eight parish region. We actually have a couple of affiliates in Iberia and St. Mary Parish, and we're looking at affiliates in other parishes this year. Currently, we're a $100 million foundation. More importantly, we have distributed another $104 million in cumulative grants since inception, almost exclusively donor-directed. So, again, we're, going back to our core purpose, we're all about building legacies and improving communities by connecting generous people to the causes they care about. So, we're a very donor-centric, donor-driven organization, right? So, that's a little bit about our organization. We're going to talk about the project specifically, God bless you, we're going to talk about the project specifically, the South Louisiana Giving Day. And just to quickly wrap your head around this, Dr. Aguilar spoke at the beginning of this meeting about the fund matching program that you all approved and the Motor Place Playground Equipment that was so successful. This is the same concept, if you will. We think that the South Louisiana Giving Day project can be a value add to the Lafayette Parish school system and to particular schools in particular. So, at that, at this point, I'll turn it over to Lauren to describe the project to
Thank you, Raymond. So, South Louisiana Giving Day, this is something we're really excited about, and to give you a snapshot of it, South Louisiana Giving Day is a 24-hour online fundraising event. This will be held on May 10th, 2018. It will begin at midnight, and it will end at 11:59 PM. The event is open to nonprofit organizations, churches, and schools in the Acadiana area and beyond. The goal of the South Louisiana Giving Day is to really inspire the community to come together for 24 hours to contribute as many charitable dollars as possible to support the work of our local nonprofits, churches, and schools. In terms of participation and registration, all Lafayette Parish schools are welcome to participate in this event. Those schools that would qualify for the LPSS Capital Projects Matching Program, those schools would also be eligible to participate in this Giving Day event. We're currently, we've been communicating with LPSS administrators, and we think maybe the most streamlined way for a school to be approved would be for the school to actually register with LPSS, filling out LPSS forms that currently exist, and then LPSS could approve particular schools, particular projects, and then go ahead and create those profiles for those schools. We're advocating that schools promote a particular project or program that they would like to fundraise for through this event, and we're hoping that through this event, there could be some possible matching grant opportunities that these schools can leverage. Just to give you an example of what a profile would look like, this is currently on our website today, it's www.southlouisiana givingday.org, and Monkis Park is our first registered participant for the event. So, every approved organization, so once LPSS would approve a school to participate, they would have a profile on this website. When donors are going to the website, they could actually click on these profiles, and that's where we're really going to rely on the schools to create a profile that encompasses their fundraising goals. They can upload videos, they can upload photos, they can be very specific about what they're fundraising for and why they're fundraising for those projects. In terms of the contribution process, the contribution process is super easy. A donor can, can go on to southlouisiana givingday.org on the day of the event, they can browse the profiles, this is, you know, it's available, you can use a computer, a laptop, tablet, smartphone, and you can click on an organization and essentially donate right then and there. All contributions on South Louisiana Giving Day are tax-deductible. There will be no refunds or contributions that are given on that day, which is made clear to the donors throughout the contribution process. Donors can make contributions via credit card- Well, they can go on anytime from April till May tenth and schedule a donation that will be drafted on that day, on the day of the event. In terms of contribution fees, this is the breakdown of the fees and, you know, there's a three percent credit card, electronic check fee. There's also a three percent website support fee that helps support generating the website and development. And there's also a two percent CFA support fee. And a hundred, there's an option for donors on the day of the event, when they go to make a contribution, they can actually select to cover the fees so that a hundred percent of their contribution actually goes to the program or project that they're supporting. Marketing and fundraising, we actually, we want to make this as easy as possible for those that decide to participate in this event. So there is a toolkit available on our website where we will have logos, we will have press release templates, email blast templates, social media posts readily available so that our, any nonprofit church or school that's participating can go on there and essentially copy and paste to share this event with their stakeholders, with their donors, and to let people know that they're actually taking part in South Louisiana Giving Day. As I mentioned, you know, this, this event, we're really going to rely on schools and stakeholders to fundraise for the programs or projects that they're promoting. You know, we're here to help do that and we're here to make that as easy a job as possible. And, you know, we believe this will be a very social media centric event since it is an online fundraising event. And like I said, you know, we'll hope that schools will send out emails, that they may decide to be on morning show appearances, make, or do radio interviews, and just share the stories about why they're fundraising for the particular project or program they decide upon. The benefits of participating in South Louisiana Giving Day, we hope this is something that can really inspire donors to maybe put up those match dollars, those bonuses, those incentives for particular projects or programs. We're also hoping that, you know, we can get the general public involved with certain nonprofit organizations, churches and schools that maybe they've never contributed to before. And, you know, through South Louisiana Giving Day, we promote that no contribution is too small to help make a difference. You know, we're also hopeful for some private and public matching grant opportunities through this event. And, you know, like Raymond mentioned earlier, we just hope to be a value add to LPSS and that, you know, hopefully in a partnership with CFA, LPSS can benefit from some of our networks, you know, through private philanthropy. So if there are any questions, you know, we're happy to answer those as well.
Do we have any board member comments or questions? Mr. Santani?
Are we going to be able to make it clearer to donors that not only would they be helping public education, but they would also, to a certain extent, be having their donation matched by the Lafayette Parish School Board for some of these projects?
Yes. Yes. So in the case of the matching program that you're referencing, those donors are going to be giving directly to, to get that match for that school, for that project. And those donors are going to know that. And obviously, there's no fee on their dollars, just like there's no fee on the dollars that donors might have with us already. The fees we're talking about are on new dollars coming in, but donors can opt to have a hundred percent paid as well, so.
Another thing on the webpage listing, when someone is going shopping to see what they want to contribute to, those projects that are match eligible will be clearly depicted on the website. So if Lafayette, if Lafayette High School is doing something for their, for their gymnasium or their band and there's a match, well, that match will be clearly, and so you'll be able to see how they're doing against the match. And that raises the interest level. That's where the magic happens, where people say, well, my dollar can now be two dollars and so I'll contribute.
Yeah, so this, to be clear, this is not something we created. This is a successful model that has been hugely successful in other parts of the country. And Louisiana, New Orleans and Shreveport have done this. But to Eric's point, the real magic happens when there is a match or a challenge or a bonus, some kind of an incentive, right?
Ms. Marsh?
I think my question is answered. I just wanted to know if each individual school, you can donate to that particular project when you go online? I think you answered that question.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other board member comments? Mr. Goodry?
Yes, so with regards to the, to the projects, we could use some, some direction. Right now, our thought process is we, the schools could request both projects that qualify for matching funds as well as projects that do not qualify for matching funds as specified in policy file, JHB. So if that's not the board's wishes, we, you know, we appreciate some direction this evening. Otherwise, that's the direction we'll be heading in. They'll have a choice between the two. It's my understanding, Mr. A. B., that you'll be able to accommodate and Realtor, donor, be able to distinguish between the two? Say a project that is, that's a matching fund project versus one that, that is not?
That's correct.
Okay.
That'll be clearly, clearly identified.
Okay.
Well, I don't, I mean, since the motion doesn't include that, I don't think that we really want to get into the discussion on whether we're going to exclude or include different types of projects at this point. I think that's definitely something Dr. Aguilar can work out with the CFA if this, if this motion is approved tonight.
The, the other, other thing, just as background information, the, the process is such that I believe projects have to be in by a certain timeframe, say March first. So if we move forward with this, in essence, the board's committing to that line item in the self-funded construction fund project for matching, matching projects for the eighteen, nineteen school year. Because this will take place in May, and so really the projects will not, will probably, probably will not begin until the eighteen, nineteen school year. So I just wanted to make the board aware of that so that if it's approved, when we come with the self-funded construction project, we know that that line item needs to be in there. So just a point of information.
Thank you, Mr. Goodry. Any other board member comments? All right. Madam Secretary, I'd like to call for the vote. Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is three point one, five, approval of increase to HVAC maintenance contract with Bernhard Mechanical Contractors. Dr. Chassell?
Yes, sir. Motion postponed.
We have a motion to postpone.
Second.
Second by Mr. Santani. Do we have any comments on the motion to postpone the approval of the increase to the HVAC maintenance contract with Bernhard Mechanical Contractors? Any public comment? No public comment? Any board member comment? Mr. Bruce Hart?
Mr. Chassell, just out of curiosity, why? I'm trying to recover the video for the, for the individual meeting that this was passed that, because this was, this was approved in two thousand thirteen, and I remember it was between two different companies. And it was one company that specialized in preventative maintenance, there was another that said they could do the exact same thing. Bernhard is the one that got it. And I just recall in seeing the request for an increase in HVAC, I just recall hearing, and I just need to hear from myself the entire meeting, that, hey, guys, in the future, we're going to add equipment. And I just recall hearing, it'll be brand new equipment, so we'll be able to maintain said brand new equipment at no cost to us because there was going to be a guaranteed max, I think it was guaranteed max price or a guaranteed maximum price. So basically, any cost that exceeded what we already paid, which was like ten point six million dollars, then that shall be paid by the contractor and not the owner. And with us being the owner, I just want to be sure, it's easy for someone to ask for an increase in, in items that the previous board may have remembered clearly that this was going to be taken care of versus a new board. So I just want to double check it, and once I, once I fact checked it completely myself, I'm going to personally bring it back to the board.
Mr. Rangel?
Yes, Mr. President, as we add, kind of piggybacking on what Dr. Chassell says, we add new equipment, isn't there a warranty on the equipment? Why should we start paying right after we add the, the unit? Certainly, there would be a warranty on the unit. So we shouldn't be obligated to pay anything on, on a unit that, that isn't warranty, it would seem to me.
Mr. Rangel, this is after the one-year warranty period. We don't pay anything during the warranty period, and they're not asking for any compensation during the warranty period. It's after that one year. But here's a company that signed a contract and we are adding new equipment, and the new equipment, there's language in the contract that calls for an increase in the cost of the services based on the new equipment. So, Dr. Chassell, I mean, we'll certainly help you try to retrieve that video. At some point, this board is going to need to decide what to do with this request. Otherwise, we'll end up with Southside High School after a year and no warranty any longer, equipment that needs to be maintained. We'll have LJ Alamon Cafeteria that we are outside of the one-year warranty that they are maintaining. We'll have those new air conditionings, air conditioners in those gyms after a year that Bernhard will not need to maintain unless we revise the contract.
I understand that. Have we, do we know if the manufacturer, the person giving, the entity giving us the one-year warranty, whatever, any Westinghouse, I don't know, whatever it is, do we know if they would extend the warranty? And if so, how much? Perhaps we could extend the warranty and save, save the taxpayer much?
We don't know about, but to be, to be clear, I think it's the contractor who's guaranteeing the one-year warranty. Is that right, Con?
Yeah, well, to clarify that just a little bit further, anytime a construction project is completed, there is a one-year warranty on the equipment for material and workmanship. During that one-year warranty period, there are some preventative maintenance items that the owner is responsible for, such as changing the air filters on a routine basis, adjusting and checking belts that, that may wear out. But the overall warranty, if, if the, if the original installing contractor, if they miss something and, and six months later, the unit fails, then yes, it is covered under the one-year warranty. But there are a few, a few routine maintenance or preventative maintenance items that the owner must take care of. But those are what I'll call tier one preventative maintenance items. Once that one year expires past the substantial completion of that construction project, then we go into tier two where the owner has not only those belts and, and filters that he must maintain, but we also have other things that have to be maintained also. But Bernhard then goes into a tier two mode where if anything breaks or fails, then they are responsible to repair it under the HVAC maintenance contract. Over the past years that we've had this contract, there have been a total of seven hundred and forty pieces of equipment that have been added to our system. It nets out at seven hundred and six because at Westside Elementary, the current Westside Elementary, we're taking thirty-four pieces that were in the building, we've taken those offline, so they're not maintaining those right now. So we're backing those out of the calculation, and that's shown in the documentation. So what we're trying to do here is, is to recognize that these seven hundred and six pieces of, of equipment have been added to the contract, and, and it is shown, I believe, or it is taken into calculations of which ones may have fallen, or, for example, Southside is shown in here as being within the one-year warranty, and then after the one-year warranty, it increases. Same thing for the Northside High Gym, Air Conditionings, there's a certain portion of it that's within the one-year warranty, and then after the one-year warranty expires, it goes into what I'll call tier two. Bernhard Mechanical could have requested additional funds long before now. They haven't. They, they have, they've, as noted in their letter of August twenty seventeen, that's, from that point forward is what they're requesting. So they have been performing the maintenance on, the, the tier one and the tier two maintenance items on these, these, all of these units since the, since the end of those projects. It's just that they haven't requested the additional cost on it. So at this point in time is where we're trying to recognize from August seventeen forward, that additional cost.
Dr. Chassell?
I do understand that my initial issues with the item started with, we saw this at the last meeting, and in reading it from the last meeting, which would have been the December meeting, it requested as of August first, that they would like to start receiving annual invoicing of an increase. So when I initially read it, that's what took me back the first go around, is we have new equipment that I thought should have been covered in the initial contract from twenty thirteen. And that's where reading the small print of this entire contract comes into play for me because we've now got extra equipment that they have, I guess graciously have been servicing for us, but I thought it was included. That's why I need to see the individual video on it. Because I could have sworn the actual question was, well, in the future, when additional equipment is added, I could have sworn the response was, well, it'll be new equipment, so it'll be that much easier to maintain. That's included. That's why we have the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price. And to see a request for a hundred seventy-four thousand dollars annually as an increase just kind of threw up a small red flag for me. But then as well, the, the dating and the timing of it all, as I see this in December, you've been performing the work since, since August, then why is it? I mean, I'll give you a better example. Kyle Bordelaw started performing other services for us at a point in time where he was doing someone else's job as well because that job was vacant. But then it came to us directly that, hey, listen, you want an increase, well, not you, but you deserve an increase because you were doing basically two people's jobs, so that comes to you immediately. So to find out that someone's been doing the work, and then you come back retroactively and ask me, hey, by the way, I've been doing said work, and, you know, I need to be paid back since August, I thought would have came to us in August. But then as well, to see that in the future, hey, by the way, as of August first, twenty eighteen, I'm going to need an additional forty-seven thousand dollars. I mean, it just, it kind of, kind of threw me for a small loop. But then as well, even in the contract as I was reading, it specified that during year one, HVAC equipment repairs are warranted. We get that the owner, us, still responsible for normal preventative maintenance, then during year two and beyond, the owner slash HVAC maintenance contractor are responsible for all maintenance of HVAC equipment. This equipment will be covered one hundred percent under the contract. So if I'm to read that sentence that it's covered under the contract, but yet I still have to pay more for it, then it's not covered. That was my only issue. Now, maybe I'm reading it wrong, I just, when I see this is covered under the contract during year two and beyond, that's the only thing that gives me a small hiccup. I'll personally bring it back. I just need to verify it all because I'm not in the business of paying for something that I think we may have paid for already. But if I'm reading it wrong, I'll be happy to admit, hey, guys, I read it wrong.
And I have a question or comment as well. I'm
gonna need an additional $47,000. I mean, it just, it kinda, kinda threw me for a small loop. But then as well, even in the contract as I was reading, it specified that during year one HVAC equipment repairs are warranted. We get that the owner, us, still responsible for normal preventative maintenance, then during year two and beyond, the owner slash HVAC maintenance contractor are responsible for all maintenance of HVAC equipment. This equipment will be covered 100% under the contract. So if I'm to read that sentence that it's covered under the contract, but yet I still have to pay more for it, then it's not covered. That was my only issue. Now, maybe I'm reading it wrong, I just, when I see this is covered under the contract during year two and beyond, that's the only thing that gives me a small hiccup. I'll personally bring it back, I just need to verify it all, because I'm not in the business of paying for something that I think we may have paid for already. But if I'm reading it wrong, I'll be happy to admit, hey, guys, I read it wrong.
And I have a question or comment as well. I'm reading the contract, and I'm looking through the attachments. And in 7.2, sorry, 7.2 it requires a written proposal, and I'll summarize. The contractor shall submit a written proposal for any applicable GMP, so Guaranteed Maximum Price, or time adjustment attributable to the changed or extra work. So there is a provision in the contract for extra work. It says that it should be amply detailed and supported to the contract documents. It is understood that any change or extra work shall be negotiated on a time and material basis at Bernhard rates then in effect. And so my question is, I understand time and material, what that means, and what Bernhard rates then in effect means, and negotiated means, but when I look at the attachments, I see a letter with a fixed price of 174, and I see an additional attachment that has each school listed with the equipment, which is good, but each one of those is listed with a fixed price. So, and I understand, they probably base that off of some time and material basis, but it doesn't show the board, or the public, what rates those were based upon, nor how they came up with the time and material estimate, if they did use a time and material estimate to come up with this. And I also didn't see any evidence in the attachments for any negotiation based off of our assessment of the time associated with the work at their rates. So that's my concern.
Mr. Kinesik, we do show a letter from Associated Design Group attesting that they have looked at the requested fees and charges and new equipment, and it is their opinion to support the proposed contract adjustment. So we did have an engineering company review the request and did deem it appropriate.
Right, I don't disagree with that. I see Mr. Blanchett's letter, sees licensed engineer. But what the contract requires is, again, I just read it, I don't need to read it again, but it says that we're supposed to have amply detailed and supported contract, or documents that we have a negotiation based on the time and material basis of the rates. And so that's all that's missing, in my opinion, is we don't have, and I don't see in any of the documents, and I'm willing to postpone it because I don't see it, the time and material basis, nor any evidence of negotiation on behalf of LPSS on these items. So, those are my comments. Any other board member comments on this item? The motion to postpone? All right, Madam Secretary, I'll call for the vote. This is not correct. The motion was not to approve an increase, the motion is to postpone. I'm sorry, okay. That the, okay, yeah, can we correct the language? The motion is not that the board approve, the motion should read that the board postpone this item. So we can vote on this in your correct language, all right. So just to clarify, we are voting that the board postpone action on this item 3.15. And save. Eighteen, against. Thank you. Next, all right, so motion passes to postpone item 3.15. Next item on the agenda is 3.16, board approval for personnel staffing at Southside High School for 2018-2019. We have a motion in a second for the board to approve the personnel staffing at Southside High School for 2018-2019. I'd like to open the floor for public comment. No public comment on this item? Board member comment? Mr. Santani.
I would like an explanation of the mechanics of hiring personnel for next year, that will be needed next year now, as in addition, how we're going to account for this offset at the end of the school year. All of this, please.
Well, we're really going to replicate basically what we did last year. As you see, we'll need, we know now, we'll need 15.5 teachers because we're gonna roll up the 10th grade to the 11th grade. Many of those teachers will need to be transfers because those 300-plus students will be coming from another school. So many of those teachers can just come from another school. Now, we see many of those students would come from Como. So we would have a math teacher that would, we know retiring in Como, and a great one would apply. I'm not gonna tell you, we wouldn't go ahead and hire somebody from the outside, but we're gonna try that the majority of these teachers be transferring them. But, Mr. Santani, it's real important that we get started on the process, because if we take a teacher from another school, it just gives the principal at that school an opportunity to know they have a hole they're gonna have to fill, and they can start looking. So that's why we kinda start now, so the other principals will know where their holes will be.
All right, so we're gonna hire 15 and a half based on 302 students projected for next year?
Right.
How many 11th grade students are there at Como right now?
I'm not for sure how many are at Como.
Do we know how many 10th grade students are at Como?
Well, these students, they're going to 11th grade in Southside, see, those students came from the, 10th grade now at Southside, that's how that number was projected. We'll just run those through.
Oh, I understand, no, I understand.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, I get that part. No, my question is that the 11th grade at Como next year will be substantially smaller than the 11th grade at Como this year, because the 10th grade at Como this year is substantially smaller than the...
Right, that's right.
Yeah, no, I understand, I understand.
Okay.
My question is, since the 11th grade at Como next year will be substantially smaller than the 11th grade at Como this year, is it more or less than 300 students difference? Because it seems to me like we should be able to just designate the 11th grade teachers at Como, that will be, I don't wanna say surplus, but over the allocation, and just say, you guys are now Southside teachers.
You're right, we could, but we let her post positions, so it could be a teacher from another, any high school could apply for the transfer. And then, I mean, the superintendent does have the authority to just transfer someone, but we open it up and give people an opportunity to apply, and then we'll have to look for somebody for the position at Como if we need it, or either we'll eliminate the position at Como, if we don't, according to the enrollment, need the position, we'll eliminate the position.
So when do we do the hiring?
We'll start advertising probably February 1, and then we'll, the middle of February, the beginning of March. They have to, the teachers have to apply by policy for a transfer by March 1. So anybody that applies, last year we did have some positions we hired before March, but they had to go ahead and get in their transfer application.
So this teachers, I would assume that we anticipated that our 15 and a half would be transfers?
That would be nice, but, you know, that, I mean, that's what we're striving for, that would be a strive...
So what I'm driving at is, I don't quite grasp how this is an actual increase in cost.
Well, it might not be, we didn't ask you to vote on the dollar figure tonight.
It says 1.038.
Well, I mean, that's, but we didn't do a budget revision or anything. I just want you to know what the cost will be, it will be in your budget when we bring it to you in the, for the budget for next year. I just wanted you to know, and it's just, it gives us comfort that you know what we're doing without us, because it is a lot of money.
That was my mistake then, I thought you guys were asking for $1 million this year to hire teachers. This money actually will be in the budget for next school year, not expended this school year at all.
That's right.
That's correct. I apologize then, I misunderstood. So the second part of my question still stands there, where can we, where can I expect to find, when we're presented with the budget for 18, 19, expect to find this accounting of 15 and a half less whatever offset at Como High School?
Mr. Guidry, can you tell him that?
That'll be part of the staffing, so you'll be able to see the number of teaching slots added at, say, Southside versus the number of teaching slots reduced at, say, Como High during the review of the general fund budget, more specifically the staffing.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other board member comments? Dr. Chassault.
I just had a quick question. I was actually following you up until your discovery, and that's, that was actually my question, so they did answer it. My question is, with the 15 less teachers, let's just pick a number, 15 more at Southside, 15 less, those 15 teachers, if they aren't chosen for new job positions, those teaching positions will be displaced teachers?
Displaced teachers, they won't lose a, they won't lose a job, there'll be a position for them in the district.
Okay. So will we still end up with extra teachers that we, and I, dear God, I'm not trying to, because I know this is gonna sound weird, but teachers that we don't, I mean, I'm not even gonna say it, teachers that we, that we aren't able to use?
So I guess I was gonna add to the comments, it's not quite as simplistic as taking 15 extra teachers from Como and sending them to Southside, because the teacher certifications play into that.
Correct.
And so it's gonna also depend to a certain extent on what the course requests are in the spring, and what the certification needs are for Southside's administration and Como's administration.
Right. I'm basically gonna ask the same question, I'm not hinting at anything, I'm just, if we, if we're gonna require 50 more teachers at Northside, Southside, see, they're already going back and forth between the two, 50 more teachers at Southside, and then there's a reduction in 300 students at Como, so therefore 15 teachers are now displaced, they'll start looking for other jobs. Granted, I know there are other various openings, higher positions, but if all avenues are exhausted, and let's say eight of those teachers are now Southside teachers, those seven teachers, we still have to find somewhere for those teachers?
Yes, sir.
And so at that point, where techni, strange question, but where do we put those teachers now, and now we have 22 teachers as opposed to...
There will be regular openings in the district and other places due to retirement, moving out of the district, that kind of thing, there will be openings.
I got you, attrition, I'm not thinking, okay, all right, thank you.
In a perfect world, this should not cost any additional money to staff for that one extra grade level at Southside, that would be what we're striving for.
Any other board member comments? Madam Secretary, I'd like to call for the vote.
All right. No, not really, I mean, the name.
Mr. President, Attorney wants to talk to you.
Mr. Pugia.
Nine, four, and against.
Yes, and for the record, Mr. Hidalgo, can you read over that motion to make sure that we have it correct?
I simply just made a motion to move for approval, so move that we, yeah, I can, that the board provide authorization to move forward in hiring personnel using board-approved student-teacher ratios for the additional positions that will be added to Southside High School for expanding into grade 11 for the 2018-19 school year.
He does verify that is his motion. Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, the final item on the agenda would be item 3.17? No, 317.
317.
Yeah, 3.17, adoption of policy GBRIC maternity leave.
Yes. Mr. President, I put that, I'd like to make a motion before I do all in preference by saying this all came about because of a real life situation in the district, and I would like to offer the following motion, I had to type it out. Move that the board approved the new policy GBRIC maternity leave for inclusion in the board's policy manual as written, with the insertion of the additional language at the end of the second sentence of the last paragraph, as follows, all eight weeks in case of delivery by cesarean section.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Hidalgo, and a second by Mr. Angel. Madam Secretary, do you need a copy of that motion, or do you have?
I have it.
She has it, great. I'd like to open this motion up for public comment. Any comment on the approval of new policy GBRIC maternity leave? We have no public comment on the item. Board member comment? Dr. Chassault. All right, Dr. Chassault, if you'll, for our attorney, I do have a question, has this been reviewed by your office?
Yes.
Okay. I have a question, I'm surprised that it does not include any mention of paternity as an option, is that, is that paternity? Especially in the case of adoption, or, or any case, really, as an option for a male...
It is, so, there's, there are no, basically, it would be available to males under the same terms, there's no gender, you would notice the lack of terms or pronouns used, male or female, or anything of that nature. It's my understanding from Mona that already, the way, so, well, first, I do wanna mention that currently, or prior to tonight, as far as maternity leave in this district, it's covered under what is, is your, this is a brand-new policy, GBRIC. Right now, maternity leave is covered under your existing sick leave policy, GBRIB, and it's one sentence. So this is, this is all new, it'll just, it just explains in detail the, how your maternity leave works, whereas... leave works, whereas all it says in your existing policy is that maternity leave will be addressed as any other illness. And it's kind of just handled by, by, by practice is how it's kind of always done. It's my understanding that the district does do, they don't call it paternity leave, but they afford to dads leave under the sick leave policy to attend to the mother who just gave birth, who is ill, and/or the child who, because that's what it's called, an illness or disability due to recent childbirth. So it's not called paternity leave, but it's, it's leave that is afforded to a father for purposes, for the same purposes. That is what is explained here. For an adopted father, there's, it's, it is what is provided right here, because there's, it doesn't say one way or the other, whether or not it's the mother, it just says adoptive parents or adoptive employees, which was the requested intent for draft, the way this policy would be drafted.
Do you feel, I guess I should have been more specific, do you feel that there's a need to mention paternity so that there's clarity in this policy a decade from now?
I don't, no, because it's the way it's going to be implemented.
Okay, thank you.
It's not precluded at all, by the terms of this.
All right, thank you. Dr. Chasson, did you stuff something? I'm sorry. Oh, Ms. Morris?
I don't have any objection to extending the time, whether it's to eight weeks or to twelve weeks. I don't think we should distinguish between C-section or not. Unfortunately, in the ABG one N world, there are physicians who give parents the option of scheduling when they're going to have their baby or scheduling C-sections. And so I'm not sure that we need to have a policy that might encourage parents who may not need a C-section, but to get a C-section because they get an additional, and I know that sounds crazy, but there are people and families who do those kinds of things. So if we're going to extend the time, let's just make it a general rule for maternity leave and not distinguish between C-section or non-C-section.
So are you proposing that we revise the policy where it says maximum of, we delete six weeks and just put, or eight weeks, and then put a period?
That would be my suggestion, but I think that Dr. Chasson is going to make a difference.
I'll tell, I'll explain what's the, the part that Jeremy added. So it's my understanding that the current practice, that, none of this was written before, so I found this out after I drafted the initial version. The current practice is that this district affords six week, up to six weeks of available accumulated regular sick leave to, to those who deliver by vaginal versus, and up to eight weeks to those who deliver by cesarean section. And so the way I had initially written it, that would have been a change to the way it is currently done. So that's why I added this back in the eight weeks for cesarean, because you would have been essentially changing the way you currently do it. So if you remove the eight weeks or if you increase the six weeks, that would be a change to the current policy. The current prac, I mean, nothing is written. It's the current practice. So you can, obviously you can make a decision to change what you're doing. I'm just let, because it, because it's not written anywhere, I'm letting you know what I learned is the current, the current practice.
Okay.
Now, now, to be clear, this is employees' ability to take what they have available. If they don't have available accumulated regular sick leave, to take them, they can take unpaid, that is what maternity leave is, unpaid leave. This is for employees who have available accumulated sick leave, they can take up to six and then the, for cesarean section, up to eight.
Dr. Chasson?
So really quickly, like two or three quick things. So the term qualified employee, does that, does that include the father? If the father is an employee of ours and they would like to use sick time? Because I was actually going to require, told him before the item came up, I was going to request a paternity leave policy, but if this can holistically encompass everybody. So qualified employees could, a father could request said time? Okay, gotcha. Okay. You do, okay, awesome. That's good enough for me. I hear you. I would like to request to the makers of the motion, possibly a friendly amendment and certainly up for board discussion, but I don't want to limit it to a max of six weeks or eight weeks for cesarean sections or even distinguish the difference. I would actually like to make it a maximum of twelve weeks. And whether or not a person chooses to take, take it all or not, whether or not they choose to use sick leave or not, just as a father, if, if you haven't given birth, then you probably need to stay out the conversation almost, because I've witnessed two C-sections myself personally. And she wasn't ready to go to work anytime soon. However, you were almost forced to go to work. And if we have the option to make this now available for mothers, if possible, and I'll even defer to Mary, I heard Mary make a comment, and, I mean, only someone that's went through it can, can testify that eight weeks is not enough time if you happen to go through a C-section. It's not, not even remotely close. So I'd like to request a friendly amendment to make it a max of twelve weeks or certainly leave it up for board discussion.
Mr. Hidalgo?
Yes. Could I, would it be appropriate for me to ask Ms. Mona, Ms. Bernard, to just comment on that? I have no problem with it because it's their leave, but could I ask her to comment on it before I make that change?
Yes, we do allow twelve weeks of leave under FMLA for mothers and dads.
That's awesome.
Currently, but we only pay for six or eight.
Right.
And the rest is unpaid.
The suggestion would be to, if, if it's available, to pay for up to twelve if they choose to take it. Does that throw any red flags up to your department?
I think it's overly generous, but it's up to you. I mean, it does cost the district because we have to hire substitutes, so, and it costs the children educationally to be without their teacher. However, you are, may certainly exceed your requirements if you wish.
Yeah.
Most people choose not to take unpaid, of course, because most of us can't afford that, so.
Are there a large number of, I don't know if I could ask, are there a large number of teachers who are likely to give both, do they have twelve weeks of vacation stacked up?
Many do not. A few do.
Okay.
And, okay, yeah, go ahead. I'm terribly sorry, but we do have a lot of babies, by the way.
Yeah, I'd like to change that to twelve weeks.
We do.
Mr. Angel seconded. He is out of the room right now. I don't know. Can someone else second that revision? Actually, he's back.
Mr. President, if I may, Mr. Angel, I changed my motion to, instead of eight weeks of maximum leave, twelve weeks. Are, are you okay?
Jeremy, Jeremy, is that only for cesarean section?
No.
So I understand the motion to be a maximum, it will read, it's the fourth line down in the last paragraph, will read for a maximum of eight, I'm sorry, twelve weeks, period, and then delete in cases of delivery by cesarean section. And there was a motion and a second agreed to, so now that is what we're discussing. Any public comment on that revision? No public comment. Any board member comment on that revision?
There's going to be two. There has to be two.
Any other board member comment before we take a vote?
Can it be read off, please? Because I agree with Ms. Morris as far as removing the cesarean section part of it.
There has to be, there, there's going to have to be two, two revisions, because the last sentence is the same.
Okay, yeah, she's right.
The, the second sentence is, is going to have to be revised to say, the second sentence of the last paragraph, taken from the journey lead to a maximum of twelve weeks, period. And then the last sentence limited to a maximum of twelve weeks, period.
You are correct. But that's the intent of the motion maker, so I think if she makes the changes in the motion, we could vote. I think we're ready to vote. Madam Secretary?
I do have one question.
Oh, we're not ready to vote, I'm sorry. Mr. Santani?
I had to check with my wife first because she had, she had a few. I want you to understand this. The twelve weeks is paid or unpaid?
It's all sick leave.
We only pay it if they have accumulated sick leave.
And if they want to use it.
Okay, so this is entirely, this is not going to be a situation where we're paying two teachers outside the sick leave portion of it? Well, but they're doing their sick leave. That's fine.
Right.
That's fine. I'm not saying, I was, no, I give them a pay and a sub. I get that. I'm telling you.
They also have extended sick leave of ninety days. It's given to them, not earned, and they can tap into that. So it's conceivable a brand new teacher could have twelve weeks of paid leave.
Well, where did that come from?
As I hear you talking, and I also have a question about, do you have to have medical mess, does the leave have to be medically necessary or are you going to give it to everyone?
Yeah.
As everything is reading in the current policy.
Employees permitted to use sick leave shall be subject to all policies, provisions, and procedures regarding sick leave. They still have to show that they are, are sick, have a disability.
I don't know that I can support twelve weeks. I feel like, I feel like this is a little out of line from what the industry would be, because I know where I work, they don't offer that.
No.
And certainly our, as Ms. Bernard said, our sick leave policy is generous. I don't, I don't roll over sick days every year. Extended sick leave, there's no such thing as that. It seems like there are avenues for employees who require this amount of leave to, to get the care that they need. And we can, you know, I can totally support eight weeks or six weeks or whatever, whatever it was when we walked in here tonight. This seems to be a little, and I remind you, I speak as the husband of a woman who had several, and I checked with her before this, before I began talking about this, so, yeah, I don't know if I can support the amended motion.
Dr. Chasson, I'll add that there is a provision after that sentence that says, however additional and or extended sick leave may be granted as medically necessary. So we do have a provision of the policy that would allow employee who needed more than six and or eight weeks to ask for it if they need it.
My, respectfully, my only issue with that is that where medically necessary, no one in our offices or, excuse me, no one here at Central Office is medically qualified to make the decision on, I bring you a piece of paper and that paper states, hey, listen, I need to be out for another four weeks because I had a C-section, and then someone makes that determination. No one here has ever been, nor are they ever going to be qualified to make that decision. But if we open that up and make it available, then a person can then take twelve weeks if they need to. Now, Mr. Hidalgo mentioned as far as two teachers being out, but I don't, I don't foresee a father using all the sick leave to stay home for, for twelve weeks or six weeks. I'm only granted two weeks at my job.
Yeah.
So this is, this is only being requested because I've personally seen two situations of my own and soon to be a third of, if you have a C-section, you're not ready to go back to work in eight weeks. And if you have the sick leave and would like to take it, you can take it as well. I mean, nobody's even remotely mentioned or thought of, but I deal with it at work. There's also postpartum depression where some mothers just aren't capable and aren't ready to go to work in eight weeks. And it's a very serious and real thing. So I'd just like to make it available since we're talking about it and someone obviously brought it up, I'd like it to be twelve weeks.
Okay, so just to clarify, there is a motion and a second that mentions twelve weeks, so that's what we're discussing right now. Ms. Morrison?
Yes, from experience, I had three, and I've never stayed out more than six to eight weeks and I was just fine. And where I was employed, that was the minimum, unless you had some unforeseen medical circumstances where you had to stay out longer. So I think we should stick to six to eight weeks and, you know, if there's something medical where the person cannot return to work, I think they would have to have a doctor's excuse and not just stay out twelve weeks. Of course, you don't want to leave your brand new baby, but come on, you have to set limits. And I did three times, I went back to work and here I am, still here, just, danger's great. Thank you.
All right, any other, Mr. Broussard?
I'm trying to recall how long my wife stayed out when gave birth to our kid, but quite some years ago, but I don't think it was eight to twelve weeks. It was something like a month or something. Yeah, six, six weeks was the maximum back then. But like Ms. Morrison says, she's still around and strong, but twelve, twelve weeks is, is a long time to be out. I grant you, some may need that time, maybe first, first, first time mom, they need that time to bond with the child, but it's, twelve weeks is a really long time for anyone to stay out. Maybe the dad and all the mom, I would love to be out twelve weeks. I, I told my company, they need to grant me my maternity leave because there's, there has been none now. So maybe I need my twenty-four months.
I got you. Let me take, let me take a look. I see the president just moved on, President Kadesik. Let me take, let me take a little professional privilege here, guys.
Dr. Chasson?
What I'm requesting is you make it available. Not everyone's taking the approach that, oh, but they're going to take it. I mean, you have to understand, it's been six weeks before and Ms. Bernard just clearly told us that if they wanted to, they could have taken even more. In your professional opinion, do they tend to take more? So someone that has a baby, that we've offered six weeks, but yet they have ninety days from once they've, they've been hired, have folks habitually been taking more than six weeks?
Not habitually. It's not often that they'll take the full twelve because of the unpaid portion. Now, and if they have a complication like postpartum depression, we allow them to take additional paid time off. That's, you know, that's a legitimate problem.
Right.
Situation, so not a lot of them will take the twelve weeks because of the unpaid portion.
There you go. I trust my employees.
All right, so we've had a lot of discussion on this. I'd like to call for the vote regarding the motion that would revise the last paragraph of policy GBRIC as it is in front of us, both the second and the last sentence to indicate twelve weeks. So, Madam Secretary, I'd like to call for a vote. So this is a vote to approve this policy, again, modifying the last paragraph to reflect that there would be up to twelve weeks approval, and it also deletes the specification on the type of birth. All right, motion passes. That concludes our business for today, and this meeting is adjourned.